Next, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. Stephanie Butler from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about S... About, um, I'm sorry, board. I couldn't... If you can clarify what the board was.
It's the S-E-A-B board.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to come up and say that this is mostly going to be about the community members at large that sign up to do committees and then they don't show up. So, a lot of people signed up for this committee. And then, you know, the first meeting, we had everybody. And then progressively, we are down to like about six actual members outside of the school members that are on that. And I just think it's not fair to other people who did sign up that really did want to join that board and didn't... They weren't given the opportunity because these people committed and signed up to this board. And we made su... You know, I know Scott Hummel did a good job of reiterating before people accepted the committee role that they were expected to be at every single board meeting that we had, which is only once a month. It's not really that much to ask of people. But, um, you know, I'm sad that the community signed up and wasted all those slots where other people who did want to come and join that were not able to because of that. And then, I just wanted to say on the third grade reading law, I understand the testing of it may not be exactly what the teachers think are accurate. However, the whole idea behind passing kids from third grade to fourth grade who cannot read, that is a... It's devastating to the kids. I don't see that we're doing them any favors. By third grade, then to third grade, you really should know how to read. And if we do not know how to read, then we really need to look at what's going on in the classroom. Because, and I can agree, some people told me the testing may not be what it's supposed to be. But to say that these kids should be passed on to another grade, let another teacher deal with it and just keep conflating the issues, conflating the issues. I don't think we're doing our children any justice here. And, I mean, my kid is in second grade and he was a preschooler for COVID. So, he got three months of GSRP. Then he went to kindergarten, all on Zoom, went to every other week, maybe two, three times for first grade. No, I pulled him out. In first and second grade, he's been in private school. The kid is reading at a sixth grade, sixth grade, first semester level. I just went to his conferences last week. I mean, we should expect our schools to hold the same standard. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Next, Crystal Paulson from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the bond.
Hello. I do have a statement about the third grade, the third grade reading issue. When I took my son out of Dearborn and I put him into another school, my son could not read, he couldn't write, he had to start over again. He is now in fourth grade, reading, writing, and learning cursive. So, my 17-year-old, he doesn't even know how to sign his name. So, if that's anything to take from this, um, it's important, especially when I have to teach my son how to sign his name. So, I do have a question for the over the bond. How did we over-collect $7.4 million? Is that $7.4 million just like sitting there? Because if we have $7.4 million, I know of many schools that it can go towards fixing Etzel, fixing Fortson, um, all the other schools. But Fortson and Etzel, the shape that those buildings are in, that's where that $7.4 million could go to. I mean, my son comes home with a headache every single day. It's a toxic environment. So, and, um, what is the situation on the bathrooms? Are we going to be making third bathrooms improvements? Because parents have a right to know. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Zahra Jamil from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the condition at Lori.
Good evening. My name is Zahra Jamil and I'm a seventh-grade student at Lori Middle School. I have concerns about my learning environment at Lori. The temperature of the building is always too hot or too cold. I see mice and insects on a daily basis. Last week, we had a ceiling leak during class time. The bathrooms are non-functional. We have broken sinks and toilets. Going to lunch should be a time for me to relax and take a break from learning. But that's not possible at Lori. I feel like the air quality in the basement and the roofs make me feel sick and lose my appetite. The bathrooms in the cafeteria are literally falling apart and it's absolutely disgusting. Two out of three of the sinks barely work. This should be the last thing we have to worry about when we're in school. Things like this have been happening throughout my seven years at Lori. I travel to other schools and I can't help but feel jealousy and wonder why our schools doesn't look as good as theirs. My peers and I deserve a better learning environment. Next year will be my last year at Lori and I hate to see other students have to go through this. I can go on and on about the condition of Lori, of the school. You keep fixing little things, but you aren't looking at the bigger picture. Our school can't be fixed. We need a whole new building. We have a school that is not a safe and healthy learning environment.
Thank you.
Next, Kaluud Bezi would like to come to speak to the board about the condition at Lori.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kaluud Bezi and I am one of many concerned parents at Lori Middle School. We... We have major concerns regarding almost every facet of our building. Students are learning and staff is working in what most believe to be an unsafe and unhealthy environment. We don't have building-wide cooling and heating system. Our boiler is constantly breaking down. We have had compressors break down twice since January, leaving our building much below comfortable temperatures in other parts of the building, over 90 degrees. We have have had confirmation from engineers that parts cannot even be purchased for the boiler we have in our building. We have such a big rodent and insect problem that our kids have gotten used to it as if it's part of their daily routine. We have water quality issues, orange and brown-colored water coming out of our toilets and sinks. We have some bathrooms that are literally falling apart. We have air quality issues, heating ducts and vents are filthy. We have leaks throughout the building, ceilings and leaks on the roof, even though our roof is only seven years old. The district cannot keep putting Band-Aids on this massive problem. We would like a more comprehensive and transparent plan put forward by the district to address this major health and safety concerns about our learning environment at our school. This might be just another parent preaching to the choir, but on behalf of the Lori community, we just want to know what is the plan. I hope you take this time to look at our petition with over 700 signatures and counting, as well as a few pictures to point out the points I have addressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mohammed Adouas would like to come to speak to the board about the school from Dearborn.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mohammed Adais and I am a sixth grade, I'm a sixth grader at Lori Middle School. I've been going to Lori since kindergarten and I'm grateful for the teachers there who have taught me to be a great student. Our school has a lot of problems and is in great need. During the winter, the heat never works and during summer, it is so hot that even with the windows open, it wasn't enough to help with the heat, which makes it hard to concentrate. So, it would be better for the staff and students to have an AC and a working heating system. Our school is unsafe. The ceilings at Lori have been leaking and collapsing on every single floor, including the cafeteria where we eat every day. It's unsanitary and there have been mice and bugs entering our school for years. The bathroom stalls have doors that do not shut because the locks do not work right. It makes it uncomfortable for anyone to use the bathroom. Also, the water in the sinks are brown and not clean. We need these problems to be solved for the safety of all of the Lori Puller Bear students and staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Saleh Madani would like to come to speak to the board about the school.
Good evening to the members of the board. My name is Saleh Madani. I am a seventh grader and I go to Lori Middle School and I have been going there since kindergarten. I am thankful for my teachers and staff that raised me in the school, but there's a problem. Our school needs repairing. The most important things that we need, which they all are, is the AC and heating system. In the winter, we have to wear jackets in the classroom because it's freezing because we don't have a heating system. And in the summer, it's burning, it's burning in the classroom. Even if we open windows, it helps a little bit. And some schools are getting AC installed and Lori isn't. Also, our school is unclean and there has been many, and when I mean many, I mean a lot, multiple times, I have seen rats run through rooms. And in the bathrooms, we need stalls, the doors, the doors don't close. Some of the sinks don't work, brown water comes out, comes out. The pipes are dirty and some of the boards on the ceilings are missing. We have no paper towels and don't have mirrors in one of the bathrooms. In the cafeteria, the boys' bathroom is falling apart and is literally disgusting. We need these problems fixed for our safety to Lori students and staff at Lori Middle School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, Ahoud Al-Sadi would like to come to speak to the board about the school. Next, Dr. Adib would like to come to speak to the board about resource allocations from Dearborn.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Maleko. Before I speak about my issue, I just came back from at so far open parent-teacher conferences and I had to go to nine teachers to see for my kids and talk to them. I was glad that I didn't have to wait for a second for any of the teacher, except one for like maybe 20 seconds as the first parent transition. The cafeteria was mostly empty, which is sad where our parents' engagements in these important conversations are. So, I hope that you take a look at how can we get parents more engaged in parent-teacher conferences after, even compared to prior COVID, it was late traffic. But I'm here to talk more also about the way that the district went on and allocated $100 million in resources for air conditions. I've been engaged in emails back and forth to just to get a basic understanding of what factors and criteria that the district took to make those allocations. I thought cost would be the main factor. But to learn just through the emails that you all see in, cost was not really a factor. Because when we ask about the cost for this couple of the schools that were left out, they were not... The only cost that we, I've been giving is a rough estimate based on industry average cost per square foot, which told me that there was not thorough evaluation of each school, what it cost before we went on and selected some schools. So, Lori, as a school that was, guess, be mentioned here, was not selected for any of these. Salina was checked fully, air condition was, in fact, it wasn't. So, the question to you, I just want to need basic information. What were the factors? Second question is, what are you going to do about just giving all elementary schools air conditions? We're talking about quality, not even equity. Because if you talk about equity, Salina should be on the top list of getting air conditions based on where it's located. You know where it's located. Dr. Maleko knows where it's located. His career was launched from there. He knows the community, he knows the neighborhood. Why is left out and checked marked as it was fully air-conditioned? I don't know. But we're here to find out. We need real answers. What are you going to do at least to give elementary schools throughout the district fully air conditions? You have the resources. A budget was presented with $40 million in reserve. Give that money and spend wisely in other places and spend money to improve education.
Thank you.
Next, Nafala Hyder would like to come to speak to the board.
Good evening, board members. It's Nafala Hyder. Almost 30 years ago, I went to Lori's school and it's really, really pathetic that nothing has changed. I saw the asbestos coming out of the ceilings. I saw the mold. I saw the brown water. I smelled that basement. It smells the same. For approximately 10 years now, I've been attending meetings, I've been serving on committees, I've been watching money being requested from the community and money being spent on many schools. Sometimes, I'm labeled a stakeholder and I'm being thanked for being a partner in learning and for my service. And other times, I'm labeled an annoying, disgruntled parent that asks difficult questions. I prefer the latter. I don't do well with sugarcoating. More recently, I've seen an awakening in Dearborn. People are paying attention. They're asking really good questions. They're advocating for students, teachers, and other parents. The most important questions I'm hearing are about money. What is our money being spent on? How can we trust that it's being spent appropriately when we're not getting real answers for what things actually cost? In some schools, you can visibly see money being spent. And in other schools, you're clearly seeing money not being spent and hasn't been spent in a very long time. Teachers and building administrators can't always speak up about the deplorable work conditions that they spend the majority of their day in. When asked why, it's usually because they're afraid to be noticed for the wrong things and they lose an opportunity at a promotion. We all know those that speak up in Dearborn become a moving target. Students speak up in other ways. They get sick, they cough, they have asthma, they pick lead from the walls, they breathe in mold, asbestos, they're exposed to brown water and other dangerous toxins. This board and administration have been called a lot of things, including unjust, lacking equity, racist, political, and many other things. I don't know if you're all of these things, but I know that you lack care, compassion, and responsibility towards some of the students. And I've seen you favor students more than others in this district. In simple terms, if it quacks like a duck and it walks like a duck, it's probably a duck. Lori has been in dire need of repair and rebuilding. Yeah, I know there's a lot of sentimental people there that are against the rebuilding, but as a parent, would you rather have your students in a healthy, clean learning environment with clean air? Or would you rather leave a building that serves as a photo opportunity for alumni? I am a Lori alumni and I say raise the building. Build what our students deserve. Listen to the people you claim to represent and act like the accreditation presentation just described you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Learning environment.
Next, Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board.
Your time's up. Your time's up, Ms. Hyder.
Next, Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board about events.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Martin, DFT president. I'm a product of Fortson High School and now a 20-year veteran of Dearborn schools. The first 20 years of my career were dedicated to students as a speech-language pathologist, while the next two years will be dedicated to students in a different way. I'm devoted to helping students by working on solutions to the educator exodus and turnover. Stability is essential for a good education and the current climate is having a dramatic negative impact on this. To honor the educators who continue to devote their lives to our students, I'd like to start by highlighting some of the wonderful events that have been put on, that have been put on the last few months. In December, the Dearborn Federation of Teachers partnered with U of M Dearborn School of Education to put on a Teacher-Led Professional Development Day. DFT members presented hour-long sessions in their areas of expertise to Dearborn teachers and U of MD College of Ed students on a Saturday. Although teachers gave up their own time planning and facilitating the conference, we hope to partner with the district and embed this into our regularly scheduled professional development in the future. This was a way for the union to reach out and create a connection with soon-to-be educators in the hopes of recruiting the next generation of teachers for Dearborn public schools. I was also honored to be asked by the art teachers to say a few words at the art show last week, and I couldn't be more proud of them and their students. A person could be born with unlimited talent and potential, but without mentorship and guidance, these students may never know just how amazing they are. Last week, our art teachers highlighted how they can work magic with students from grades kindergarten up through 12 and with a very diverse set of skills and interests. In the next couple of weeks, I'll be attending theatrical productions at Bryant and Dearborn High and also an orchestra performance. All of these events are put on by teachers who extend their workdays to nights and weekends for weeks on end and only to support our students and also to shine a positive light on Dearborn schools. I officially took office in January and have been visiting schools to chat with as many educators as possible in order to keep my finger on the pulse of the heart of our district. Members have been eager to share their thoughts and ideas and I look forward to presenting them to Dr. Maleko and his executive cabinet as we work to solve the prevalent issues in the city, in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Joe Winkle would like to come to speak to the board about safety and protocols.
Good evening. My name is Joe Winkle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Miller Elementary. I've come tonight to share my concerns regarding safety in our schools. At Miller, we have been hard at work implementing ALICE protocols for our lockdowns. Staff and students have had announced and unannounced drills resulting in students successfully barricading doors, countering intruders, and evacuating the building. All of this happened because we worked together and listened to each other. Our leadership at Miller made their expectations clear. I was shocked and infuriated to learn that not all of our district is doing this. There are schools still using the outdated method of locking the door and hiding in a corner of the room. How is this acceptable? If this were a math or reading curriculum, would we still be waiting for updates? According to an article from the New York Times, as of mid-February this year, there were 80 mass shootings in the United States, one of those occurring not too far from us in Lansing. I leave you with these questions. What is the plan for getting the district on the same plan of keeping the students safe? Is there a timeline? When will the standard be for us to utilize the most effective lockdown methods? When will the plan be to ensure door locks work, that cameras work? I appreciate, appreciate, and truly I do, for the transparency of your comments earlier of working with Michigan legislatures to keep our communities safe. And, but these questions require action as well. We cannot just hope the problem goes away or that the dust settles. Your leadership is necessary if we want to be prepared for such a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have some cards for those that did not want to speak.
Okay.
Aman Sadi, a parent, would like, she would like to make the following comment. Air conditioning at Salina. I do not live in the area, but drive my kids to school because of the staff's passion and dedication. Our kids deserve better in air conditioning and better environment for our staff and students. Next, Hadi Abadi from Dearborn wants us to know that his comments are Lori needs to be rebuilt and add AC. Shorik Jamil, as a former student, I am very disappointed that the conditions at Lori have only gotten worse since my time many years ago. This one needs to get translated. I'm going to hold. Fahed Madani, it's really hard to leave "learn when it's hot, we need AC." I am Itisam Mohammed, I'm sorry, Itisam Mohammed. I am very concerned about the air quality that our children are learning and when they go to school. Amal Kayid, Lori's school conditions are very concerning. We have the best staff and students and they deserve better. Please make an effort to create a reasonable environment for our students and staff, proper AC and heating, bathrooms, cafeteria, et cetera. Awad Sadi, parent, our students deserve the best possible education and when they are too hot or too cold, their ability to concentrate becomes easily distracted. And then we have one more.
Before we get to that, I want to make sure, the young man, Fahed, did you want to speak to us?
He says he's good.
Oh, okay, because he started approaching the podium and walked away. I just want to make sure. Thank you, sorry about that.
Yeah, if you want to translate that one for us, thanks.
This is Fumali Al-Hijaz from Dearborn. She's talking about fixing cameras, bathrooms, lockers, and girls' showers. She did not mention what school, though.
That's fine.
Lori.
Lori?
Lori's.
All right. Before any of the students leave, I want to thank you for taking the time to come here and speak with us, as well as everyone else that spoke today at the meeting. This is a chance for the board to ask questions about some of the items that were brought up. I want to see if anyone else wanted to talk. Mr. Trusty Barry, you're getting a lot of time. All right, go for it.
Watch yourself. I just want to clarify, read about a third grade, Ramad. By no means, I'm questioning what teachers do. I love teachers, respect teachers, thankful for teachers, I can go on and on and I... Please, it was kind of put out there, questioning teachers, that's not my intentions. When it comes to testing, there's both sides to that. I'm not getting into that debate, but it's just, the different, all the districts get tested by the same test, pretty much. Okay? And the results are out there, they're online, people can get to them. Okay? The other thing is, sometimes we hear COVID, loss of, you know, education, or have you. I don't mean to sound like a you-know-what, but COVID hit everybody. So, yes, everybody experienced the same thing that we did in Dearborn. I just want to be very, very clear. What I'm asking for is a discussion at this level with my, our superintendent and how can we improve our reading? Doesn't have to go by the assessment scores, can always improve reading, that's one point. The other one I want to clarify, and I know Mr. Wal did a great job clarifying it, the $7.4 million, we did not over-collect. We collected before the state gave us a directive. That's why we didn't collect the money this past year and that's why everybody... Did you want to address that?
It's what we had to do in last 2122. The money we did collect, we had to set aside and put it in a bank account and not spend it because we were not entitled to use it.
Yes.
This year, which we are entitled to use, in 2320, 2223, that money went into our normal revenue, we would have collected this year. So, it's not extra money. The money we collected last year, we could not spend according to the state because it was not our, we didn't have the treasury authority to do that after a state aid change in the note. This year, that money went from the savings account back into our normal operating budget as part of our normal budget process.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's not extra money that we have or we're spending, whatever. Just want to make sure that it was clarified because it was put out there. And my last thing, President Thorpe, is the committee that was mentioned earlier, I don't remember what that acronym was, but it's the Sex Ed Committee. It was in board notes that I asked, I actually reached out to Dr. Mustin with permission from Dr. Maleko, Dr. Mustin and Mr. Mustin, because I had two community members reach out to me and ask me that they put their names to get on the committee and they weren't picked. But, and part of the report that we received, Dr. Maleko, thank you, is that, you know, absenteeism is a problem. We need to figure out a way that if you're not going to show up, maybe somehow be replaced by somebody on standby or maybe, you know, whatever we need to do. Because if there's people, and I know those two people, they would have been amazing committee members. I'm looking at some of these names, I don't recognize some of them, but if... I don't recognize some of them, but if they're not showing up, they need to be replaced or maybe put on a list that, you know, maybe they shouldn't be on committees anymore if they don't show up to fulfill their responsibility. That's all I have.
That's been an issue with committees going back to the dawn of time. They'll always start out strong and then start to fizzle.
Well, my point is, my point is, is that if first meeting happens and two or three people don't show up, should we be able to reach out to the people that wanted to? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't lost.
Several different comments came in tonight about Lori. Lori has been something that we have discussed at building in sight. I know last year we talked about it a few different times. I cannot tell you the specifics when we had gone out for that 2019 bond, but I know there must have been money dedicated towards Lori. So it is one of our older buildings. We are aware that there's things going on. I don't know if you'd want to add anything to.
Yeah. I don't know, Tom, if you can come up too with me, but I know Lori, I think, was one of the highest amounts in that bond, and I don't want to misspeak, but I know it was up there.
Correct. Lori is our highest-need building on infrastructure side. As we have been going through this Fielding International Study for the Long Year Plan, we're going to have several buildings that are going to be labeled that need replacement, some of them are going to be labeled needing, you know, just infrastructure changes and others that are minor infrastructure changes. But they'll be color-coded, and the public will be able to see what their building is at and based upon the number of improvements to the square footage price of the building to make sure if it's remodeled versus replaced.
And I would just say in the short term, we'll discuss with our team and Mr. Andrews and that about some of the concerns, you know. But obviously, we're talking about a bigger question here overall when we're hearing some of the, you know, like you said, with the infrastructure and the study coming out. I was actually at Lori today reading in a pre-kindergarten class, so we'll continue to talk to staff and look at issues we need to have, and if we need to do air testing or anything, we have the ability to do that. We do that across the district, so.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, I meant to mention something, but my president's timing me tonight for whatever reason. But yeah, Lori, we've discussed that many, many times. And I am so looking forward, I'm very thankful to all the parents. We are all thankful for all the parents, the students, for bringing this to our attention. But there are some things in there that we don't need a 30-year study to address. There are some things that was mentioned tonight, and, you know, if these pictures are, you know, legit, and I have no reason to question these pictures, we need to get to some of this stuff like tomorrow morning. That's the end of the story. I mean, no student should be going home and telling, "Mom, I saw another rat today," if that's the case. Okay? We need to get to those stuff. With all due respect, yes, I am so looking forward to the 30-year study. Hopefully, you know, I'm sure they did, and we'll see some of the stuff that we heard about tonight in that study, and we will get to it. But some of those things that were mentioned is, and it's not the first time, it's not the first time we've heard it, but we need to get to it. There's no reason, like some of those pictures in there, like when there's a city inspection of a residential property, that property gets written up and things have to be taken care of like ASAP. When the word mold comes up or asbestos or something, let's get to the stuff. Please, thank you.
And we've got the study session for the board next Tuesday evening where we're going to hear from the Fielding Group regarding Lori and the state of the other buildings in the district as well. One comment that got brought up was about the Alice method that we've been doing, and I know that's been one that we've been deploying through the district. I want to say through the, maybe for the last 12 months. My understanding is that we were using it in every building. Isn't that the goal?
Correct. We're in transition, though, because it is a philosophical shift, and we're also right now tracking down, because last year we allocated time for individuals to go through the online module. So the online module isn't the end-all, but it is very informative, and it talks about a different philosophy. So the things you hear, for example, at Miller, and I know Ms. Elzayat, yeah, you can come up if you'd like, Ms. Elzayat. In fact, the timing of it is that you got to do a combination, and we do have some of that. In fact, this was a major topic at my general administrators' meeting on school safety, on how really it's everyone-in approach to it. And I think that's what I heard. It's the central office, it's the building administrators, it's all the staff in the building making sure we're secure. But the Alice is a philosophical shift, and some people, and so we're easing into it because it might be more comfortable for some than others, and depending on what level you're at, you know, of grades for different students. But it is the strategy for the district that we're moving on, and I know that we just had the training last week, right? And I'll let Ms. Elzayat, and it's a train-the-trainer model with the SROs in our partnership, and so we've already started some of that going out into the buildings.
We have, and it was very successful. So now we have, don't quote me, but it's 13 or 14 trainers in the district. So they just completed their Alice training. There are a few more certifications that they have to go through. So there's a post-training course or stuff that you have to do after the actual physical training. So once everybody is certified, we'll start rolling out training in the district. And like Dr. Maleko explained, it's a partnership between the police department and admin in the district, and hopefully we can start training everybody in the district. I did want to make a comment, though, about, it was mentioned earlier that there was a concern because classrooms were being trained to hunker down in one area of a, that is no longer the case. So at one time, that was an Alice recommendation for a lockdown, and was that we should lock down right away, lock doors right away. People were not being taught at one time during Alice training, people were not being taught to evacuate. So depending on, and this is all taught in the Alice training, depending on the situation, depending on what's going on, what part of a building you're in, you have to make some judgment calls during an emergency. And the judgment call is, should I lock down? Should I evacuate? So we've been doing some really, really positive, amazing drills in the district where we are now working with staff and students to evacuate. We're coming up with scenarios. We're actually giving staff and students what are called exercise injects. So they are given a scenario during the drill, and they are told what's going on in the building, and then they are asked to act out on that scenario or that drill. So we're making really, really good headway on the training there. And I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
And I could just say with the videos, too, that Mr. Addy's been sending people notices if they haven't completed the training because they need to complete it, and we did allocate time for that.
Right. And that training, Dr. Maleko, great point, I'm glad you brought it up, that training actually does add the new component of not huddling in one area of a room, which was brought up earlier.
Trustee McDonald?
I know the Alice training will be continual because once you learn, I mean, you have to reinforce everything that you've learned. But do we have an estimate when all of our buildings will be under that particular protocol?
So every district employee has been given the opportunity to take the Alice training, which is the video that rolls out. That's the initial one. And then we are putting together a plan where we hope to get every district employee trained with the Alice training, but we're going to do it in phases. Every building in the district has what's called a crisis team, an EOP team, emergency operations team, and we're going to start with those teams first. So we'll start training those teams first, and then once they get trained, they can start rolling out the training to their buildings.
And I think the importance of the building team is critical, so we have to have some standardization. But, you know, a high school's going to look a lot different than an elementary school, and then it depends on the size of the building and all the factors. And I can just speak from being a principal, you know, at a smaller elementary to a large bill school. And so you need those building teams really to look at the diverse situations within a school. You know, simple things like locking doors, which is required, is something, like I said, everyone needs to help. Meaning, if someone's propping a door, then that's not helping safety. So those are the things that we've been reiterating with the ministry. We heard from the union, too, they brought up some things, and we've been talking to our principals to work together with everyone and try to make sure we're following those protocols. But it is, you know, it's philosophical, too, because you're going to get in a situation, and like I said, maybe a kindergarten class, you know, there's flexibility within Alice as well, depending on the situation. So it's not like a one method. There's options. They basically give you options. So this protocol won't be the same in every situation.
I would follow up to what Trustee McDonald said, though, that we've got to have a timeline. For one, we expect this to be completed.
Oh, sure.
What is that?
I mean, we'll get.
So we just finished the actual physical, train-the-trainer. There's some, like I mentioned, some post-course requirements that need to be completed for everybody to actually be certified. They give you up to six months to do that, but we're hoping to have it done within three months and then be able to roll this out to the EOP teams, hopefully by the fall or even in the summer if we have time. We can put together like a timeline plan and bring it forth. I just, it depends on the certification and when we're allowed to roll it out.
And in the interim, everyone is still doing all the training, like we have to do lockdowns.
All the training, so we're still going out to buildings.
Students are very familiar with procedures during a lockdown and what they need to do. This is just giving different options and as tactful decisions are made for individuals.
And I will say.
We have the buckets in every room as well. I know we're tracking that, but everyone was supposed to be.
They have the buckets and they have the go backpacks. They have stuff that's rolled out. We roll stuff out periodically, just training stuff, tips and stuff to remember.
Trustee Pelishkov?
At the high school level where we also have security in place, and I'm thinking about a school like Fortson, which has many doors, many, you know, levels, how do we also incorporate the security that we pay to come in and help supervise the egress and ingress of the building when it comes to these kinds of training opportunities?
You mean during the day-to-day, or how do we incorporate that in lockdown?
Well, I've got two questions. One, I went to Fortson last fall, and while I was walking through, discovered that a lot of students were opening up back doors to exit or come in during the middle of the passing period. And that alarmed me because there was nobody there saying, hey, you know, you're not supposed to be, you know, because it allowed for anybody to enter or exit the building at that point in time. And I did bring it up that I had some concerns then. At that time, we had not hired you yet, and so I knew that we needed to kind of have that conversation moving forward. So now that we're having it today, I have some concerns about how we utilize the additional security that's in the buildings that we think is there to help protect the building as well as the students in a variety of ways. And then how do we incorporate them during these kinds of drills as well? Do they have a role to play, and are they, you know, up to speed with what's going on during any of these training programs?
Yes. So when we do the drills at the high schools, which we're currently working with Dearborn High right now to do a drill, we do incorporate them in the drills and exercises. Everybody has a position. As far as doors being locked, I'll tell you, for safety in doors, there's always room for improvement. We're constantly working and reminding, you know, staff, students, security guards to man those doors. And, you know, everybody does the best job that they can. Are we going to get a student here and there who's going to open a door for somebody? I can't lie and say, no, we're not. But we are in constant communication. We have a good partnership, just constantly reminding everybody to keep your eyes and ears open for that type of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can add too, I want to thank Kathy Martin for bringing some of those things up so we were able to go back and really look and now reemphasize. And I know she's mentioned, too, she heard some improvement, some people were contacting her. So what we need to do now, and we'll just be honest, like during COVID, we knew that for air quality and things, you kind of were a little more flexible because of the air situation with the virus, right? So we're clamping down, I'll say, a little more on those doors. So you're going to see more of an emphasis from administration, you know, out to teachers, to everyone, that everyone needs to do their part. And so if someone needs to walk a little further to get into a badge reader of a door, that's more important to do that, to maintain safety than propping a door or something like that. So that's what we're going to continue to emphasize, and that's a good point, Trustee.
And just one last thing I wanted to mention is, that's why the video was so important. So when we're talking about timelines and rolling out this program to every single staff member in the district, in the interim, the best thing is the video. The video teaches you tips, how-to, skills, and training for how to stay safe and what to do during an emergency. And we're working right now with the technology department to identify anybody who hasn't taken the video yet, who hasn't watched the video yet, to make sure that they do, because that is the best.
And he is sending that out.
Yeah. He's doing a great job with that.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, Ms. Elzayat just, I mean, gave us very valuable information here. Some people under the assumption that you just watch a video and you get certified, which is not the case. Okay, that was going to be one of my questions, but you answered before I asked it, and you just kind of answered what I was kind of looking for. Dr. Maleko, let's make sure the timeline that we just mentioned and the plan goes to all staff members. A teacher should never feel unsafe in a building, because if a teacher feels unsafe, everybody else is in trouble. So like I said, let's just put all the information out to the staff members, including the teachers, please.
Trustee Pelishkov?
And we've had this question before about our substitutes and edgy staff. Do any of them, because if the video is at least helpful, do they require the people they employ that then come into our buildings to possibly watch the same kind of training program that our staff watches?
Good question. Does edgy staff watch the video? That I don't know yet. I'd have to.
We can designate, though, when they get hired by staff.
We can definitely do that. I know that when a sub comes into the district, I'm working with all of the schools, and they've already done a great job of this, there are substitute folders, which, so when a substitute comes into a building, they get a folder in case of an emergency. This is, you know, this is the classroom you're assigned to. In case of an emergency, these are the things you'll need. These are the tips. Take this folder with you, take this bag with you. They do have steps and directions for that. As far as edgy staff, Bob, do you want to add?
I was going to say, in terms of long-term staff, that are long-term subs and everything like that, we can send those video links out to them like that. Usually HR is in contact with us about that, and so we do get those out there. But edgy staff, if it's a one or a two Z, that we still have to look into a bit.
Well, we can talk to NADA, and we can talk to NADA about that.
Yep. Great point. We can work on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional?
I'll be very quick, I'm sorry. I'll be very quick. I was challenged recently to become a substitute teacher, of all things. And I said, okay, yeah, with one condition, hopefully that I'll be able to write the check back to PTA. For obvious reasons, I can't substitute in Dearborn, but the training they put us through, unbelievable. So yes, there were some things in there, obviously not, you know, obviously the same organization that we use, but there were some things put in there. So I don't think it should be a big issue to reach out to edgy staff and say, hey, if you want to substitute in Dearborn. There was like 12 or 13, 12 or 15 videos that you have to watch, and you can't move forward until you watch everything. And I actually went back, and there's some interesting stuff. So that's why I say, thank God for our teachers, some of the things I have today put up was very educational for me, and I'll try to be quiet the rest of the night.
All I, what I was going to say is, for those that are unaware, edgy staff is a staffing consultancy that we work with to fill our vacancies, for those that are unfamiliar with it. Trustee Moser, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, obviously, we're all concerned about Lori's status. I think a major concern is the water quality, so I'd like to get a report on last time that we tested water at that school. And perhaps while we're at it, we look at the older buildings and the water quality in there. So if you can get a status or a report on when was the last time we tested the water for its quality and, yeah, similar schools as well.
Thank you. Anything else before we move to the next item? All right, next item, please.
Board follow-up?
Any additional follow-up from things that we had talked about? Dr. Maleko, was there, I can't think of the things that we had talked about in the February meeting that we might have needed to follow up on. I would say, Trustee Barry, my memory is that Ms. Sally Bazzi got us an email, I think that same evening with the compliance officers, or it was like the next day. It was pretty quick that we got.
It was the same evening, yeah. The time I got home, it was.
So thank you for that. I can't picture anything else from the February meeting that we were asking for follow-up on that we might not have discussed.